Hi everybody. This is a Sunday afternoon and your trial conversation is on. I would like to try to make it hear me. It's amazing how those figure out the tricks of running like these people. Okay, hello, we're going to be talking about this now. He's discussion about the right and how he was defeated within the city of Boston and Israel. My name is Peter. I need to eat his pronouns. I'm an organizer of the Boston Chapter of the Black Lives Matter of America. I've been involved with anti fascist for for a couple of years now. So how this means that the structure is the Volca panel, which I'm facilitating. There are five people on it. One of them, this is my main party, but will be here. I would introduce that to you in turn. You will then have the questions to answer. And if you're trying to get a negative at time, so we're gonna try and have a hard soften. If you have any further questions, you can always direct them by email or Facebook to our group. Before we get to our panel, there's a few sort of announcements and ground rules first. And this is pretty important. We have to ask that you respect people's privacy concerns and not take photographs or video. You know, they don't seem to do it yet, so that's scary. Second, and this should go without saying, fascism, fascists, and biggers are not welcome here. If you are one, don't be here. They come across as a cross, yeah, across a significant whole range. Our security team will escort people out who are disruptive or break those rules. So please help. I don't think they even do it. So that's good. Format here is this year's day of competence, not waiting to do, you have a deadline. And how does it look like? My manager, he's our first speaker. Chip Gray has spent over 40 years studying and writing about radical movements. Both at the Women's Research Institute in Somerville. He is a co author of a book named "The Classic Book, Writing, Caca, Was It People's Comfort?" His new book is called "Tromic Democracy in the United States: A Raven to the Right", which is an edited collection due power to our self-approbation. Good luck, everyone.
Other years I worked for a Canadian professor who gave me a stopwatch and said, "If I go over..." Yeah, now it's social. No, I think everything could be developed now, but I wasn't that sure. Yeah, it's true, I'm not that bad. Not in fact, I obviously remember the natural substitution. It had to be like, I was thinking, you're using something. In turn, we all have so much to talk a little bit about. We were a rise, but we were already impossible because of the threat to so many different types of people and groups. We have multiple opponents, 1% of our leaders business, nationalized business, internationalized business.
And on to our show, President Barack Obama. That day, you're pretty hurt, so.
I don't know what he did, but yeah.
But having the record that the cops aren't gonna save us. Why can't they, God, they're gonna save us? Oh, we didn't save us, they got us. And it's just a moment that we hope, that only can they save us, for them, for them to save us. And that's, that's politics, I think, um, was just politics, as politics is all here. But I also came up with a lightbulb for a policy that I was thinking. Knowing you're poor, you're working, and you're queer, you're outside, like, we're just part of life. This is part of life, and we gotta make someone who walk for you. You have a hug, another love, but not right now, that's just a poppy, you're wrong, it's very interesting. They are helping children. And that is a comfortable place. Um, and to me, like, any fascist organization. No, he just put, he said, ignore them. I'm not letting him say ignore, I must think, watch where I'm dying. And it's very personal, it's very cruel. Because when they say just ignore them, just ignore them, well, they go home and they need to sort their lives, just ignore them. They go home and hate us, just ignore them. But we can't confront them on the street, we're always gonna confront them. We can't confront them like organized, how can we confront their homes? How can we tell other people to confront them? And it's just kind of like personal, it has to be. Politically, politically, I think, just like that very, um, march, it would be. But thank you, but thank you for coming back. I've no say in what I get, um, leave us. But we need a deep, broad, positive coalition, using our tactics to stop them. Because I would have to do the three best organizing help. Not just for her, but to get to know each other and to learn how each other will work, and to learn how they work together. It's like it's poor, I play lots of hard, not just on, no shade, both of us, I know that shade. No, it is season, all they, right through eight, all the time, things are working well. So people say just ignore them on the street, that's totally off the street. We give power to each other, we exchange contact information, we give power to exchange information about us. No, not yet, can't do that. So just have a way to have, we don't want this from fascists. We can't allow them space to, if I give them a platform and not confront us with us. We're not gonna fit, we're not, and that's why, also, I still, this half year, nobody has other than the basic, the streets. And also have the platform to pressure other businesses, not providing space for them. Because as long as we have this group that is of organizing, it's a lot, well, I mean, we share something of, of ours, that we're sure it's important, before organizing, including. That shared space is what allows them to perform. So also having that second asset, making sure you have a secondary shared space, share with their problems, like, or, or, and, and. And there's sort of this organizing, um, and then there's organizing. There are errors about some of the big fights. Because, you know, religious narratives, um, featured on all these programs, they're the triggers. We're really lucky in some ways, when there's people who do something, try to make it happen. But then we have the problem, it's the cops, and, um, there's, there's just some spice in it. That different places are operating, and they also purposefully, what we, I would say, um, we found out, where is that? We support for just, and people, because they are people helping. They, out of that place, they're to attack the enemy for us, and they, we have to have that edge of that. That's something like a lot of times we have failed. But we, uh, we got a lot of things, we have to build a broad vision, where, yeah, there are certain things that are uncomfortable, certain, um, this poor stuff is not allowed on the street. But we can add around that, and allow those tactics, we still have to respect, and we still have to fasten our strings to older, and, um, so that creates a foundation. And which we build, or these large, complicated fights, we do have to rely on some of our resources. And that pushes us to, or what this part, we have, like, a few days, we have that base on, like, this is where we draw the line. That makes us stronger. And I can trust, like, I will say that we've done a couple years ago, I remember a lot of the, like, I'm, which is, I, I didn't know that, that was very, um, very scary. You should be more to believe, if you want to fight for it, and it's so hot, it feels like internal violence, that's against the nature. The bigger picture is that, yeah, quite sometimes, and, and right here, it's very, that's the one. And he's the most powerful man that I've seen. And he has emboldened, but most of the left has conceived, growing, for past ten years. You don't have time left on your life for this. We never have time, especially if you don't have time left. And I can believe, I can believe, I can believe that, like, privacy and presence and identity, you didn't think that, you can't accept such a loss. I think that future is possible, I know who is that hard way. I think we're never gonna get, you know, fight for it, you ask, you can't get it. And hard way to the street, the party, fascists, to make that, down. And future does not work. Thank you.
Sarah, um, next up, we have Kitty, who uses she/her and say that pronouns. Uh, she's a member of the Boston Chapter of ESA, and a speaker.
Hi, so Sarah goes so long, the awesome thing to us, did this speakers before her, and I go with the same thing, but Sarah said, I can't talk, but, um, to that, so. She gets some, please, please, yeah. So Sarah, could you tell me things about this, about fascists organizing, and how, what, this is about, the street level is organizing, how organizing? But, um, one of the reasons that I was asked to talk on this panel, um, to, 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 to introduce her, is because I was at the counter protest, both the original, United the Right, um, Charlotte level, and also, um, you know, very, excuse me, last weekend. Um, and I, um, I, 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 I'm a speaker, I do first aid, um, so that's what I was doing there. And for me, um, part of what, well, sort of, first of all, last year, um, I, 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 I was there for, I think, it was all major segments of, uh, the United the Right. So the, uh, the, the, the rally, let's see, the, um, the, 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 the street fall next morning, uh, part of that. And, but, uh, it, it, this, one, one thing that I should have thought of, uh, is the, of course, of course, because, that was a really interesting period of the balance. That is, because I came, I came back from that, and, and, and everything was a full year in Austin, preparing for, uh, catering to the Austin Free Speech Rally. And, uh, Boston Free Speech, this is part of the, really, like, uh, that's, I got a lot of, or, it's really, really dogged, we say, it's, it's, that's. Um, and you take the word, they've always tried, they don't like, yes, it's, it's, with, United the Right, so, for obvious reasons, it's, it's, you're like an aster, and they always try to disavow that. Just because it's really like that, or disavow, I think, I think, except for, um, so, it makes me, um, but, but, they think, you know, they, they say that, I think, this is how it happened, and, and, and then it's okay, but it's always disavow. Because one of the speakers that was going to be at that rally, um, who does, who did this, was also, who was, uh, also, he was also at United the Right, and he used to be the second in, and now, that made the, uh, the, the order all night, to Kyle Chapman, who is the founder of, of, of Boston. Uh, despite, with a three thousand cosplay, um, and, uh, so, there, there was always that connection, um, Boston Free Speech always had a very heavy presence of anti-comm, uh, anti-commist action, I, I first. Notice that in May twenty seventeen, Boston Free Speech, that was just rally, they were out in their year, which that, and, 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 sort of, everywhere, which, they, and then I also saw one again, uh, right, uh, that, like, the anti-comm people. Uh, they don't look pretty, uh, sporting blogs, that were, really, don't, you know, hard ride, see, that, um, for that, August twenty seventeen rally, uh, they, they were talking to true anti-commists, or, it's sort of, getting, um. Um, and so that, that connection, and, and, and I call it, it's security, for Richard Spencer's, uh, speech, in, in, for, uh, so, like, that connection was always there, and now, with the United the Right two, uh, Jody Ball, who's a Proud Boys, in New York City, um, in, in Brooklyn. He, he, he co-sponsored, this, this, this rally, in New York City, on the back, and he, um, he's worked with them before, and he, Boston Free Speech, at the Proud Boys rally, and, um, tried to get over, really, have a great upstairs word, you know, or, um, but he, he was a speaker at United the Right two, this past weekend. Um, and in fact, this, this, this rally, had, uh, multiple people who were in the, 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 uh, the, the, planning, uh, the United the Right two planning blocks, attending their rally, as well as the speaker, who, who, so it's always, it's always been disavow, because, they, they disavow the hard, because it's here. Anyway, I, I, it, it came back from that, and then, you did, later, the whole Boston Memorial was finalized, um, and, and to, uh, the Joel, uh, Q, I'm sure they worked with it, I'm sure, that, um, organized the Joel, uh, and then it's, it's later, with the Boston, and, and, it tried, a little nervous, after, after United the Right, but it turned out to be a great, so many counter, and that just showed, uh, of course, that there's a lot of police violence against, so, I, I, I remember that, I treated some of it. Uh, but it was very connected, and starting, the momentum, here, um, enforcing, to, to, that this number showed what we can do. And then, the thing was that they, they did start to be, um, they didn't run any actions, or sense that, they don't, they don't have the numbers that they used to, but they ought to, that's the whole organizing work. That Sarah was talking about, is that they're trying to, to meet each other, they're trying to build trust, actions. And we've seen recently, some of you may have followed the various needs, for the, the organ, of, the Patriot Fair rally there, and with, sort of, Proud Boys involvement, um, and just, like, violence against fascists, someone who created, from, street fascists, and then, more recently, violence against them from police, because they, they're always in their minds, like, I've seen, over and over, the police will give thousands of missiles to street fascists, and they'll, 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 they'll take their side, like, I, 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 I've had, I always take the side of the street fascists, who were, literally, like, running to, they don't have any money, like, on, on the spot, so, that's, like, um, they're not helpful. So, um, if you've seen, if you've seen, uh, I mean, there's a report, like, the, um, the Patriot Fair was one of the original, like, constituent organizations, of the, of, that's all I was saying, uh, and, like, what exists in Portland is, in my opinion, what is, that the, the, the street fascists always want to see here, um, and I think that had the workers not come out, who, who, that, that we did last August, I don't think that we'd be much, much closer to that here now, like, that's what they want to be, and people don't always understand it, because it's the way that the, of, the party that presents, and that tries to present as being not perfect, they're not walking around very, uh, so, so, but, like, sometimes they do, but, like, they're trying to be more, like, public friendly, but then, they have all their, say, helicopter, um, but, like, they don't obviously do their, your job, pretending, to be modern, it's, like, change the law, and, and, uh, what, what, different, or, or, like, so they don't necessarily see that.